Call this November seventeenth Jackson County Commission Work Session to order. Have our roll call.
District one.
Present.
District two.
Present.
District three.
Present.
District four.
Present.
For Ms. Present, Mr. Arnold do our indication reports this afternoon and Mr. Miller.
That's great. Father Lord, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for your many blessings of life on this earth. We thank you for the health and the wealth that you've given us. And Lord, we just pray for this county, Lord. We pray for these leaders. And we just pray that you give them patience and discernment. And Lord, we just pray that you help them to guide and to lead. And it's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
Goodbye to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent approval of the agenda. We have seven items on the agenda. Do we have any changes before we proceed? There are no changes. We have motion to approve the agenda with these seven items. Motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Okay. We've had no one sign up to speak.
No.
Okay, we'll move straight into our discussion items. The first item is regarding insurance benefits. Mr. Willis and I have been discussing some possible additions and changes to insurance. And this afternoon, we wanted to talk a little bit about vision. We have Scott Head with us this afternoon. So I guess we'll give you the opportunity to go ahead and give a brief overview of what we're looking to do. And then we'll open that up for discussion.
Do you want to talk about the vision?
Yeah, you can kind of just touch on the rest of it, but focus if you are.
Okay, very quickly, my name is Scott Head. I own community insurance located in Huntsville, Alabama. I spent about sixteen years with Lacrosse Blue Shield. I was the marquee rep in Madison County. And then I was the director of North Alabama for six years. And then now have my own shop where I brought several folks over. And we do a lot of employee benefits throughout North Alabama. We have handled City of Scottsboro for about five years and so very familiar with Melton and Rick Wheeler. And we currently have dental and vision, the vision coverage that we're going to be talking to you about in the city. Likewise, we do business with PolyMod. We've been doing business with them for about five years. So Lowell and Craig Chandler can speak to what we do and how we take care of our clients. Likewise, Cloverdale, which is your nursing home here that has about a hundred employees. So we have three fairly substantial employers here in Jackson County. And we hope to continue to do business with those folks as well as you. With that said, Guardian is one of the largest players in the market, whether it's life or disability products, dental and vision. They're going to be in the top five in the country. When it comes to vision, they're going to be in the top three in the country. And in Alabama, they're going to be number two. Guardian has two distinct networks. Hence, you're going to see two different vision programs offered. The benefits themselves are the same, if you will, when you're looking at end-network benefits. But the networks make the distinguishing factor, both for price and both where you want to go for your participating provider. VSP is again the nation's largest provider network. Guardian rents their network, just like they rent the Davis network. The VSP network is what we call the freestanding ophthalmology or optometrist place. Whereas your Davis network is your like Sam's Club, OptiWorld, Sears, JCPenney's, and Walmart. Depending on who you are, you might like the advantage and the convenience of, say, a Walmart, if you will. Some people like the freestanding clinics where they're actually seeing a doctor. And every time they go, they see the same optometrists or ophthalmologists. But in, just in brief, and you guys can launch any question, what you're going to find on the benefits, and I use this example many times. First of all, on an annual basis, you have a $20 copay for an exam. And you have a $20 copay for your material, which would be your lens or your frames or contacts. And so I use my $10 pair of glasses and assume for the discussion, let's say that this was a $700, $600 pair of glasses. So if you're using one of the VSP providers, you're going to average getting a 20% discount off of the retail charge. So now this $600 set of glasses is $450. For the simplistic nature of it, let's say that the lens are $225. So the $225, the bifocal, single bifocal, lenticular, or trifocal, that's going to be covered at 100% after the $20 copay. All right, now we've got the frames are $225. They're going to pay on an annual, every other year, every 24 months, $130 toward the frames plus an additional 20%. So if the frames were $225 of this, minus the $130, that's $95. Plus the additional 20% is 19. We'll round up and say it costs you $75 around that, costs you $75 for the frames. $75 for frames, $75 for the lens, excuse me, $20 for the lens, that's $95. $20 for the exam, so there's $115 for an exam and a $600 pair of glasses purchased on retail. That's very crystal clear how it works. Now, it does not cover your progressive, your transitional, things of that nature. But those are all discounted at about 20 to 25%. So if you're using, if you choose the VSP, you use the identified network we spoke of. If you choose David, it's a little less amount on a monthly basis. But then you have the Costcos and the Sam's Clubs, et cetera. What we see a lot of employers do that are going to contribute toward it is the employers adopt a resolution where they take the cheaper plan as the core plan and/or the Davis network. Then if the people would rather not use that particular network and would rather use VSP, then they use that as the buy-up option. The employee pays the difference between the single coverage, based on what the county or the commission would be paying, and their part would be.
Okay. And this is a, just covering the vision, we've talked about several of the different benefits. And we'll be talking about that more in some of the upcoming work sessions. There's some savings there, I believe, if we make some of those changes. But if you'll notice on this, the participation says sold with dental. I think we're going to still get these rates and as we continue to talk about these other options.
That's correct.
This is something, right now, again, if we do this, it's currently the county's benefit as far as vision goes. If you have your Lacrosse Blue Shield card, you can get a discount on your eyeglasses. But that's all that we do right now is a discount. So this would give employees the option to basically get some actual vision coverage, which I think a lot of folks would need and appreciate.
A lot of people have concern about participation, but given your demographics, based on probably an average age of 42 to 45 years old, where people are starting to come into the reading glasses era, indoor behind, you're not going to have any problem getting to 35% participation. I know that Rick wouldn't have a problem with me indicating this. And the city has approximately 235 employees, and they've got well over 50% participation in the vision. And they have for several years. So with that also, they've only had one minor increase in five years. And I think that was around 5% on the vision. You'll see that this is a two-year red guarantee. A lot of people assume, okay, what's going to happen after that two years? You see very small trends in the vision arena. I'm going to say the average is probably about 3%. But again, they've only had one increase in five years.
Questions or comments about this?
We have a little bit going to think.
I think what we, because we're a little bit late in the process, they've had me putting together a lot of information. And we're now kind of culminating a decision in front of you folks. We probably try to enroll it for December one with a February one effective date. We want to make sure everybody has their ID cards and everything's loaded up in the system so we don't have any problems coming out of the gate. But then we'll have the renewal, the coincidental medical renewal, every year from January first.
Okay.
What's the money difference if you have no copay?
In terms, so if you had, instead of the $20 copays, had zero copay, you would probably see the rate go up about 35%. And honest, I'm not, I haven't seen one of those. That's not to say they wouldn't do it. The lowest copay structure I have seen is a $10 for materials and $10 for the exam. And I would say that your rates would go up about 15% if you decided to bring the copay down.
Any other questions or comments? What I'd like to do is place this on the agenda next week. Of course, take time to review it this week if we have any other questions or if we want to look at anything else. Would we be able to get some more information?
Sure, you betcha.
Take a look at that. And then if we're ready next week, we'll have it on the agenda. And if we're ready, we can move forward with it. Any objection moving forward like that? If you have any questions, either ask myself, Michelle, or we can get you.
I'll give you some of my comments here.
You have any questions for him? All right, anything else? Okay, move on. Move on to the next item, road conditions policy. We discussed this at a previous work session, last work session, I believe. Mr. Porter did make some amendments to this. You have the first page as the resolution, which would adopt the second page, which is the policy. And all this says is that if there is a, instead of saying a road is closed, if we declare one impassable, this is how we'll declare impassable. And it will come from either myself or from the county engineer to do so. And this is how the information will be presented. But I think this, he was concerned about some of the language in the last one that was presented, and that's been changed. Any questions or comments on this item? There's no objection on this. I'll place this on the agenda for next Monday night as well. Okay, next item, recycling trailer. It's Mr. Wyler.
I've got a real quick copy of one of those, two sheets, too. We opened a bid for recycling trailers that we're paying for through our ADM grant that we received. We opened those this past Monday. The top page is our bid. And y'all see the trailers are $15,825 each. We have enough grant, we have a $63,300 grant from ADM. So we purchased four of those at that price. What we're, if y'all will turn over the next page, you'll see, this is just, I've been on the phone with the successful bidder, talking to them. We've got some pictures and stuff that we're going to do. We're going to try to make these trailers real, make them, you know, look good and not be a sore spot for the community to have to look at. We took some pictures that I supplied by the, Dust Rogers and the Chamber supplied some. We tried to have some real high-definition pictures made. But some of those pictures, I've done sent out to them. Y'all see, we're just, this is just kind of a work in progress. We're looking at the, pretty well, the size of the trailer, I think, looks real well. I think the end, the back of it, on the right side up to top, that's pretty good. Chairman and I looked at one with the sun. We all, we decided that was a little bit overbearing. We was trying to do something like the picture of the courthouse. Maybe, I know I've seen some pictures of courthouse with the clock and the steeple and stuff in it. We was looking at maybe doing a picture like that and putting on the front of the trailer in the place of the one with the sunshine. But this is just some ideas and, you know, if, that we've thrown out and, you know, that we can pretty well put anything on there. I've got some stuff, some verbiage I've got to put on from ADM because it is a grant. And that would go on the back of the trailer, just in small print. But this, you know, this project was partially funded or wholly funded by ADM. And I think what the company's going, the trailer looks pretty good, you know, like they had.
This way, mine is riled.
Yeah, it's a lot of riled.
What about the lids and all? I mean, that will be painted, right? I mean.
These here.
Riled, that's what they paint.
Just my painting down there. This, all this blue and all will be, will be painted. It really ties in with the fixtures real well, I thought, to the sides. I was thinking, you know, like, I know we have mountains of advantage on one side. I'd like to see somewhere, you know, put Jackson County Commission on there, some way incorporate that in, along with ADM verbiage if required. This, using comparable funding from ADM, it'll take about four years to fully fund this project of where we want to get it to. We want to have 12, 14 trailers, of course, and a truck and all the holly. We'd like to do a lot of educational literature and stuff. So if we decide to approve this bid, I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, go ahead and put on the agenda to go ahead and approve, get started on next year's grant, if we could. I'd have that in by March, but it's quite a lengthy grant that has to be done to get that completed. If we do want to proceed with it, then if we go ahead, at the meeting, we do this and approve that, and we can get started on it.
Questions or comments? Do you want to tell them about the mail-out or whatever we're looking to also to help prepare this information?
Yeah. We're looking at, including the mail-out with our bill that we send out every quarter through Arista. They have what I'm doing. We're going to put a mail-out in that identifies what we're doing with the recycling program right now, kind of who we're at with it. Right now, you know, we have three locations that we do. And we're going to put out the times and dates of our community cleanup that we do. And also put out a holiday schedule, you know, so people are aware of when we pick up garbage and stuff like that. Just kind of, I know we've got Thanksgiving coming up. We're going to, like Thanksgiving Day, then we'll, we won't be picking up garbage that day, but we'll move all that forward to the day after Thanksgiving, which will be on Friday. That gives everybody time to, you know, we have enough ice picked up on Thanksgiving morning, but it just kind of messes everybody's family dinners up. So we move that to Friday this time.
Do you have a truck to go empty these trailers? Or are you going to pick the trailers up and carry them to the?
That's be part of our, I'm hoping on our next year's grant, I hope we can get funded for a truck and maybe two trailers. You know, we submitted for a truck this time, and I put in a whole ball of wax. I submitted, asked for a truck and 12 trailers, 14 trailers, 14 trailers, yeah. And we got four trailers. And she did tell us it would probably be a process that would have to occur over several years. But I'm going to try to talk with them this next time and tell them, you know, maybe if we're doing four trailers, we get two trailers and a truck would be, would be good. Because we are going to need something to go pick them up.
Four trailers, huh? So they can probably four trailers, right?
Yeah.
Are they compartmentalized and dump trailers? Or how do you get the product off of them?
They're, actually, the back, the back opens up, the way these things, I didn't bring the overhead shot, I looked for it, and I don't think I had it. But these things, you can actually get inside of them and rearrange the compartments a little bit as far as the amount of aluminum and stuff you're picking up. You know, you can adapt them. But you, they don't dump, they open from the, these open from the sides. And then this one here at the back where the cardboard comes out, it, it just opens up like a horse trailer, cattle trailer, a little bit solid, so you can get the cardboard out easy.
And that's not blocked, though?
Yeah, everything's locked. As y'all see, the, one problem we've had with the cardboard in the trailer we have now, they're all just big open, you know, cardboard's real bomb. Some people throw boxes in. But y'all see these, they have the slotted type, opens and people crush the cardboard and get a lot more in, get a lot more.
Questions or comments? If there's no objection, then we'll place this on the agenda for next Monday night to proceed. And also, I guess, if there's no objection, we'll go ahead and start putting together any applications.
Yeah, y'all include that, you can.
Thanks. Okay, next item is Ameresco. We've been discussing some possible plans with Ameresco for some time. We kind of narrowed the plan down. I think at least a couple of you had the opportunity to meet and look at this a little bit more. But I'll let Bill Maher kind of explain one more time what this plan we're looking at now, and if we do decide to go for it, what we need to do to do that.
Okay, I'll just talk from back here if that's fine with you guys. As you know, we've been working with you all for quite a while on a scope of work that included, the driver was really to improve the HVAC system in this building. But we're going to try to capture some energy savings, help offset that cost. We've had a couple of revisions on the scope of work. And the latest revision, or not the latest revision, but the latest strategy to go about this is to break it up into two phases, to make it easier for you all with your finances to get rolling. Where Phase One would be changing out all of the lights throughout the county per the scope of work that we laid out. We're looking at going to all LED lighting through the county. That'd be Phase One. And then Phase Two, what would come afterward, we'd be probably looking at February, March of next year. And Phase Two would be everything else that we've discussed in the past scope of work. That would be the HVAC system here in the courthouse, as well as the insulation and some of the automation and controls. And what we, the next deliverable we're looking for, and by the way, Phase Two, moving forward, we can't move forward without your, your all approval. So what you'd be agreeing to upfront right now is just Phase One. And then we would have to have a notice to proceed before we move forward with Phase Two. And what we're looking for now is an actionable item now, is not really an approval of anything. We want you all just to tell us that you approve of that strategy. And then we will present you with the, it's called the Energy Service Agreement, which is the contract. So that's all we're looking for, is that you all, you know, understand the two-phase approach and that you approve of the two-phase approach. And then we'll present you with a contract. Again, that's, you know, then obligate you to, to sign the contract. It's just, before we actually present it, we just want to make sure that you all understand that, that strategy and, you know, are interested in that strategy.
Questions or comments? So everyone had an opportunity to look at, at least this updated, I don't know if I got a copy of yours, have you had a chance to look at it?
This first off.
I think what you're saying, in order to proceed, of course, you just need something from us saying, okay, let's get that contract together, right?
If you just tell me right now, that's good enough for me. Like I said, it's, we're not looking, you won't be obligated, of course, to sign it. We're just looking to make sure that you all are interested. You know, we changed the scope of work a couple of times. So before we put it together and put it in writing and lay it out on the table for review, we just want to make sure that you all want to see it.
How many total light fixtures, how many units? Do you know that all thing?
I don't know off the top of my head. It's, it's every light fixture in that, that list of buildings. But I apologize, I don't have that number in front of me.
Some question I've already asked you, but everybody else knows, you know, this is bulbs and balances, this is not actual fixtures, correct?
And it also includes the demolition of what you have now. And you asked that question before. We can either remove the old stuff for you, or we can leave it with you, whatever. If you want us to take it, we'll take it. If you want it, we'll leave it.
I think we talked about, you know, maybe revising this a little bit to, or the cost when we get the contract, seeing as how I think we're definitely going to need fewer lights if we do this.
The way we address that, and that's a good point, is that we'll come out upfront, what we have now, as far as scope of work, is light for light. Every bulb you have now will be replaced with a bulb. And once that's in place and you all look at it, if you believe that's too much light, because new lights, of course, are going to put off more light, we'd be able to handle that by taking the material back and giving you a credit on Phase Two. So, yeah, we're not looking to sell you, you know, equipment that you don't want or need.
Any other questions or comments? What, we can either tell them to go ahead, or if, I know a couple that haven't had time to review this, if you want to review this this week and pending no other questions or anything, we can give that go-ahead next week if we've not had any other questions or comments on it. Seeing we're opposed to proceeding, at least we still have to vote on the contract and proceed then.
Yeah, certainly, certainly. We're just looking for you to tell us that you understand the two-phase approach and that, that you want to see the, excuse me, the contractual document.
I understand the two phases. So that's all we're waiting on, and finally looking to see what you got. Okay.
Any other comments? All right. Then if there's no objection, then I'll work with Mr. Maher and see if we can get some type of contract put together and go from there.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Next item is regarding the councilation job description. We're looking to revise the transportation coordinator job description to add some responsibilities as assistant director, if that's correct. And I think as far as the cost on this, we've talked about how to move those costs around. I don't think there'll be any cost to the county due to where those funds are going to come from, moving some funds, or cost to Title III. And I'll let Ms. Ferber kind of explain why we want to do this and how we're moving it back.
Well, we're wanting to do this because we need to have the transportation coordinator to bring, what he's doing now, we actually need to be paying him for. And we needed it in his job description because he's taken on more responsibility than we had originally thought. And to cover the funds, the way our payroll is scheduled out, my, my salary comes from any of the programs that we have down there. And at the, at the moment, I'm taking 80% of my salary out of the transportation program. And if I move 16, I think it's 16%, something like that, of my salary to a program that we had excess funds in this past year, then we will be able to cover the increase for the transportation coordinator.
How often have you seen excess funds in these accounts?
The Medicaid waiver, yes, yes, on that account, yes.
And also with this, as I understand it, he'd be assisting in some other director functions as well, helping with some different things.
Yes. He will be our safety director, as well as doing some of the invoicing and a lot of the record-keeping for the programs.
Questions or comments on this? In addition to this, we are looking at some other changes out at Councilon aging and we're trying to get those costs and figures worked out. And I wanted to present all that at the same time, but we're not prepared to do that yet. But that is something that we'll be presenting in the future for some of the other programs. Again, we just recently moved a lot of our part-time to the hiring center over here. And with that, we need to get these other folks kind of at the same level. So we'll be bringing that to the commission, hopefully in the next few weeks also. Any other questions or comments on this item? If you have any questions, I'd like to ask, again, if there's no objection, to have this for the agenda next week. And if there are any questions, comments, I'll just serve it to myself and hopefully answer that for you.
Yep.
Okay, next item's a discussion, hire mapping appraisal. So take this retirement incentive and got some plans there before, but I think we're going to hire you and we'll present that, counsel that.
You can see there, we put in there the descriptions. Last year and before last, I think it was, we rewrote all the job descriptions. So this mapper, of course, we're losing Ken Young, how long, 35 years? 35-year mapper. And so it's not somebody, it's, it's not something you can just, we can't just go find somebody on the street to do this. So we've included different, different levels of that job. So what we'd like to do is advertise, and then depending on who we get, you know, we may have some mappers from other counties. And that would be an idea if we get somebody that already knows what they're doing. So we may have some mappers from other counties apply for this. When I say other counties, we know that there's folks that live here that does this, that works in other counties. So it may be that some people want to just come home. So if we can find somebody that knows what they're doing, of course, we might not start them all as a mapper one, we may start them as a mapper two, or mapper three. Just really, we want to see what kind of experience they have before we decide where we want to stick them at. If we can't find anybody, of course, we're going to train somebody and we're going, we'll start them as a mapper one.
And I think, again, we've had a few retire out of that office, or will have by January one. So I think leaving it open would be the best option, like you say, so that we can get the best quality candidate. And I think we can definitely afford to do it with the savings we've had over there. And so if we did approve this next week, it'd be, I think we'd be good to approve it as this, where it'd be a one, two, or three, depending on the candidate that we receive.
And I don't, I don't know if we included the pay scale in there. I'm sure Michelle can share that with you. But it's, we did include the descriptions for a mapper one, two, and three.
Any other questions?
Is there anybody in-house that can move into that position? Or are they all the same level?
There's nobody left. I mean, they're all retired.
I mean, one or the other, you know, some of them, I guess we'll open it up for in-house that, you know, we'll look at them and see. But as far as technical training in this area, we don't have anyone.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? If there's no objection, then we'll place this on the agenda for next Monday as well. And the final item, just to let you know, we've had someone turn in a two-week notice at the Parks Department, one of the employees out there. And we'll have that letter to be approved next week, as well as, I'd like to get this opened up. As far as a replacement candidate, Mr. Barnes requested that it be someone with electrical experience and wanted to include that in the description. So if there's no objection, I would like to include that for next week. that for next week, but otherwise, this is just a letting you know that we will need to open that up and fill that for you as well. Any questions or comments on that? So that concludes our items. So we'll move on to our reports. Mr. Wyler, Mr. Thurman, Mr. Allen, anybody? Mr. Miller?
No, sir.
Mr. Legel?
No, sir.
Mr. Venable?
No, sir.
Mr. Guttman?
No, sir.
Okay, that concludes our items this afternoon. We've had the most people that we've had in a meeting tonight, and the smallest room we did. So, we'll entertain the motion to adjournments.
I get motion.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye, and opposed say no.